Six thirty, someone called meeting to order and Mr. Earl Hall, Commissioner Alshire, here, Commissioner Mayner, Commissioner Behrs.
Here.
Commissioner Hughes, Commissioner Warman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Here.
Bagley, Wilkins, Dux. All right. Would be the pledge of.
Stand for pledge.
Pledge of. 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 The first item on the agenda is review and approval of hard minutes. This would be the minutes attached to your packet from six thirteen. Does anyone have any thing to discuss regarding hard minutes? We have a minute or so please. I've been a while.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. That brings us to the action part of the agenda. And this is the public hearing piece regarding the request for VRVO property at two twenty-two Denton. And I will open the public hearing piece of the meeting. So if at this time you have, if anybody from the public would like to have anything to say, if you would stand and state your address and your name before speaking, then you have your opportunity to speak. So it's open at this time.
Can I talk about something other than the VRVO? Or shall I wait?
I think we should start with the VRVO piece of it. And let's get through that and we'll see where it goes. Hi, yes ma'am.
I am Kelly Confsori.
Okay.
Two two-two Denton Street, that is my residence. And I just want to say that the reason for the VRVO is that I do travel a lot. And in traveling a lot, I have family here, which is, I have two daughters and two son-in-laws. Aubrey and Eli are from Centralia roots here, children that go to school here. I've been involved in things here. My other son and daughter, they're in Paulsville, all of which are very close in the event that something does occur if I am out of town. The other thing is that I've had the privilege of staying at Rollins' house, the Sneed house, seeing sisters for, and I am familiar with Betty and some of the others that are in the community. And I love Centralia. I've been coming here for the past seven years. And the community itself, it seems to be a very tight-knit community and a very caring community. The owners of the different facilities or stores within the square and that I've come across, everybody has always been very friendly and very welcoming. And it's nice to see that the community is growing. And it does seem even with Hubble and the different Honeywell, things that are around, much less all of the colleges that are here, that the need is there for the additional space to stay. It is a four-bedroom house. And I'm doing my very best, since I've been here, I've put a roof on the house, we've done new landscaping to the house. The inside is furnished very nicely and modestly so that it's comfortable for us when we're here, but also for anybody that may come in. It's family-friendly and it's child-friendly. The yard is gated. And I think it would be, I think it would be a lovely addition. It's not a matter of, the intention is not for it to disrupt the community or disrupt the block. There are a lot of children on the block. So whatever is, you know, whatever is required of the city, I'd be glad to, you know, if you need documents or present anything, I'd be happy to do that.
All right. Thank you. Did we have anyone else to speak regarding the VRVO? Yes ma'am.
I just got to meet Kelly. I'm Rita Tashi at two seventeen. So I'm just kind of this way. My main concern when I got the letter that it was going in was now are we going to have to give up our nice quiet neighborhood? Are our children going to be at risk that run up and down the streets and, and is there some kind of condition people have to have to go and stay in there? And then on the other hand, I think, well, I have friends that come to visit people at Sunnydale and they might want a place to stay. And so I don't, I'm not either yea or nay. I just kind of wanted some answers to what to expect.
Information.
Because I've really never lived by a V, B.
Or Airbnb or VRVO.
Whatever. And actually, I've never heard of one before. Yeah. But I've never lived by that to see what kind of in-and-out traffic comes. So since I've gotten more information, I'm getting excited about it. I'm happy for Kelly if she can find people to stay in there and give her a little extra money on the side there.
Okay. Well, thank you. Anyone else regarding the VRVO? So.
I did receive two phone calls. They were just concerned about the in-and-out traffic, what it would do to the neighborhood, basically what Rita said and Kelly kind of addressed there. But that was, those are just concerns and asking questions on what a VRVO is and that sort of thing.
Okay. Well, if there's, and your thing is not related to this at all. Okay. So I'm going to keep it completely separate. So with nobody else regarding the VRVO, I'm going to just, I'll close the public hearing piece of it. I'll bring it back to the commission, the board of VR. Sorry, it's been a long day. To have any questions for you. And I'll actually, I'll actually start that first to address some of the concerns that I know that you have. We do have very detailed ordinance or.
Code.
Thank you. Code regarding VRVOs that we put in when Betty came to us a couple of years ago and requested it to put in the Rollins Street house. And it addresses most, I think, everything that you're concerned about as far as having to detail out what's expected of a renter or somebody that would be coming into that. They have to sign an agreement when they rent these properties. They have to adhere to those agreements. As part of that, and I think that you addressed that well with your son-in-laws and your family that are here close by, is that the owner of the house has to have somebody to be able to respond within 25 minutes should something occur. So that become a nuisance. I think the last thing that anybody wants to have happen is to disrupt a family, quiet neighborhood or put children at risk. And I don't think that we've had any incidents with the ones we've had so far that I know of. So just on my behalf of stating to treat, to address your concerns, I think that we've well detailed that out in our current code. So does anybody have any questions regarding the request for the VRVO from hard? Go ahead.
Well, since we granted it in the past, I was present for one of my own, another Rollins Street house.
There was an R two. It was in a loud.
Okay.
Rollins was R one, Sneed Street R two.
Airbnb is a company, Virgo is a company, it's a nice defined type of housing. They have a contract with you and then the proposed tenants have a contract with them also or with you?
The contract is with me, but part of having VRVO or Airbnb, if you use it that way, is it also vets people. A lot of the people that come through there, even as someone, if they come into your home, if they come in there to rent it, they get rated as well as somebody that stays there. They are rated as a bad person. So everybody that's on VRVO that has a property, whether it's good or bad, you're able to put a comment on there also. So if they go somewhere else, that it can be, you know, there are things to protect the people in place, whether it's you as the owner of the property with a lease, with even, like you said, even with Betty. When I rented my initial with Betty and continued with her for a little bit, I had to sign a paper with her. So primarily, it's going to be with me.
Right.
As the police department, for your knowledge, you live in property owners of the other properties, had problems that they weren't able to deal with. Any complaints from the citizens about these?
Not that I'm aware of.
From the existing ones that we have?
Yes.
I don't, I don't think we've heard anything in the aspect of anything that happened or any problems have been brought to our attention. I don't know if anybody else has heard anything. I mean, I know it's.
Betty was happy enough with it. She's doing a second one.
Right.
So.
I mean, I myself, I use VRVO quite extensively, so I'm familiar with what you have to sign to be able to rent one of these properties.
And it's.
She likes forty-one.
Is that Chris?
Yep. And I can, I mean, I personally can say that when you go in to rent one of these, you're making an investment. So most people.
Chris, I didn't mean to hear from.
I'm joining Christmas for it. So most people that are going to rent one of these properties, they have to put down this, you know, they're putting down quite a bit of money ahead of time and then they're investing into this. So it's not, it's not something that's not very well detailed out, just from my experience. So for what it's worth, I mean, I've never had a, I've never been able to rent a property that didn't require quite a commitment.
You mentioned that the current owner is looking at having a second operation. That means there's a public demand for these facilities in town?
Seems to be. We've got three now.
We have three right now. And I would imagine that if Betty had put the first, she put in Rollins Street and then she's putting in a second one, I can imagine if she didn't have the demand, she would probably not make that investment on Betty, but that's my opinion. Yes ma'am.
Sorry. I'm Aubrey. I live at three twenty South Richmond. I'm her daughter, her middle daughter. When like she brought this idea to us, especially with like my sister and us living pretty close by and local, like we're just three blocks over. I've talked to friends, I'm friends with people here and they, a lot of people have said, even people in Columbia, they're like, that'd be great for like, I know it's not close to like Mizzou games and stuff, but you run out of places to stay where it's close enough to get back and forth. And then also with second Saturdays like rolling up and now Allen Street Social is doing like brunches and they're open on Sundays and things like that. Since like the community is picking up, I've had multiple people tell me, or even as sad as like people coming into town last minute for funerals and not having to drive from Columbia or Mexico or Moberly and being local for the visitations and the dinners and things like that. A lot of people have brought those things up to me. They're like, actually, that's a really good idea. Centralia already has three. They fill up so fast, like Betty was telling me with deer season, she's been booked up for, you know, a month's and a day's and stuff like that. And weddings and graduations. So, I mean, I've noticed and heard that there's like a demand for these things.
I also, I mean, I personally know of, just from my own experience, I know somebody in the community that's an older person and their family, when they come to visit, will rent out an Airbnb. They bring their family and their kids and they don't have enough space to stay with, you know, their mother. So they rent these out to stay local and be able to do things around the holidays. So, and just on occasion. So I do know of those instances. It also kind of creates the demand for these in the community, kind of like this, where you have that situation probably quite frequently with no hotels, there's no place to stay.
You received the application.
Mm-hmm.
We did all the advertising and signs on the yards and everything with no qualifications and all the.
Correct.
timeframe. And I recommend that you keep a copy for the newspaper and put it in the file on this. So all the technical parts of this have been, the box just checked, right?
Yeah.
Okay. They still need to go through and actually get a business license for this if we prove it. Okay.
Yeah, there's a short, there's a one-time, short-term rental application. And then each year after that, that's just the business license.
Yeah, if they do it now, they get the pay now and again in January.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything?
I think it fills a big need in town, hotels. I don't really think.
I'd be good too, personally. I'm always a fan of VRVos, but I use them, so it fills my need.
I'm somewhat concerned.
I stayed in one last night.
Chris stayed in one last night.
I had a need for one for three or four days, myself personally, just to kind of learn how to redo some stuff on my house. So there's some more needs.
Yeah, that's a good point too. I don't know if you heard what Chris was saying was that he himself could use it, you know, while he's gotten, he's getting stuff worked on his house, you could stay at a, you know, a rental here in town on a short-term basis in order to fill that need, so.
My biggest concern is R one, that single-family residential. Now you turned it into a, it's more than just a lease where you're leasing out a house to somebody for a year or so. It's short-term, you have rapid turnover. I have some concerns about that. I don't really have any concerns at all with R two and R three, but R one, people who buy a residential neighborhood, they buy because it's basically owner-occupied.
Well, my statement to that would be if you had an owner that occupied the house all the time, these places aren't rental all the time, you'd have less traffic, more traffic.
Well, I understand.
I mean, so it's not going to create a whole lot more traffic in general.
And don't we already have one in R one?
The Rollins Street is R one.
Is R one. So we already have kind of a precedence there where we've already allowed it in R one.
And it is allowed as a conditional use in R one.
Yes. That's right.
So sorry, the decision regarding the need.
The standard has been set and out. I believe that the contract requires the maintenance on the facility to be held to a higher standard than anything the government can recall. Home Association probably could, but the city can't come up to the same standards of paying as per the contract termally with. Is that your understanding?
Yes, there is. I have the, if I'm not here, then my daughters and their husbands, they do between the cleaning, we have a, what is the ozone?
Like an ozone machine that you plug in to clear the air out and stuff.
After somebody leaves, the ozone machine goes into each room for a certain period of time to clear the air out. The, and then they're cleaned thoroughly. And, I mean, you could all leave here and go over there now and you would walk in and go, oh, okay. Because it's cleaned thoroughly. I went through it and made sure that everything is done in it. Showers are re-cocked, that everything, everything that's necessary is there. And yes, it is held to a little bit of a higher standard because people will rat you out if you are a bad person as far as a owner or VRVO rep. They will go on there and they will say, this place, they will let you know anything and everything about it. I can tell you, I did have one bad experience in renting a place and we called the company, we called the person we rented it from, and they moved us that very next morning and found a different place for us to stay. And the person that was the owner of that property was removed from being able to rent their property for them longer. So these companies do hold them to a pretty high standard because it's their business too. I mean, they're gathering fees off of this as well and, you know, if they get a bad rep, then. Susan, what you said earlier though about with VRVO and the fees, the fees are a little crazy, but I believe that that also, that also protects the owners of the property from people who come in. You're not going to tear up the property with the amount of money that you're paying VRVO in these different fees. Forget the taxes, but the other fees that you're paying, you're not going to tear up their property. It's not that type of a, I don't know if you want to say clientele or people or.
Demographic.
Yeah, demographic. It's not that type of, type of thing.
I looked at the neighborhood, there are, in particulars, but there are some houses that I don't know whether they're rentals or owner-occupied, that aren't nearly as good-looking as the property that's there.
Don't look at my next-door neighbor.
So, you know, it, there's no guarantees, no matter how you treat the property. I understand God's concern, but we, the board at the time that this was adopted, decided it was potentially possible to have one of these in any zone.
Yeah. I still, I mean, I mean, the damage, I mean, to me, I mean, significant damage risk is actually more on the side of the owner. I mean, taking on that risk of somebody coming in and creating damage, but I also kind of, I mean, I know it sounds like I'm advocating for this, but I feel like it's been successful for what we've done. So my opinion is, is that I don't think that we're the type of community that you're going to see, you know, a bunch of people that want to come here and have some lolly crazy party in the middle of Centralia.
Yeah, like it's not like the Columbia where you have Mizzou and Stevens and all that.
I think you risk that more in the Columbia area, probably. So, but.
How likely or how easy is it to change these rules? I think my question for us about you.
If you wanted to pass new rules, you'd have to either have an ordinance to adopt those rules and/or an ordinance to say that staff may develop from time to time rules that apply, but you'd have to have basically amendment in some sorts of zoning ordinance and public hearing for that. And then an ordinance passed by the board.
Because I've read that Columbia has had some problems and they have resisted their policies as what they're going to go about. So I, and I suspect that we're not going to have some of the problems that Columbia does.
That's why I asked whether there'd been any police department or neighborhood concerns reported.
I heard nothing.
I think worse trouble with this than just a general rental.
Confer.
My observation is that as long as you have isolated rentals like this or B and B, Airbnb's, you're probably not dealing with the same concern as if you had a whole neighborhood nothing but rentals.
I think there's a couple of points here. First of all, they don't keep their properties up, they don't keep their high ratings. It's a business, they won't be a business because people will not rent.
Right.
People are discriminating, this stays in place. I stayed in one last night, I picked between three, kind of down the line, they were all high star and they all were super hosts. That's what I look for. And so the cleanliness and all that goes into effect, and if we start to have any problems remotely like Columbia does, we need to address those correctly as a city in general period. And we would just have to make an amendment to approach anything that is out of whack. But I really think these things police yourselves very well because other clientele people would come to these places to stay. Plus you also have to have a credit card, just like you have to have a hotel that's reputable. Because if you tear the place up, they've got your credit card and you're going to fix everything that you tear up. So I mean, bottom line is, I think there's a lot of safety precautions in place to protect the residential area. I wouldn't be worried at all, you know, at all myself. So I don't think that's a real big risk. It's like anything, you have to keep an eye on it because if at any time, somebody could rent it for, for the owner probably, not all of them, for the owner, a woman and individual. And they have to be ready for the right kind of people that would be doing so.
And I would like to, sorry, Chris, I would like to point out too, one other thing, that when you, when you do go through and rent one of these, you rent based off of capacity. So it's a four-bedroom home. I'm guessing you're probably at a six, maybe, depending on the size of the rooms, maybe eight-person capacity max. And any violation of that would be a violation of the agreement. So it clearly states in there that there's a maximum number of allowed guests. So when you're going through.
Your ordinance has a limit, two, super bedroom.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, six to eight probably for this property with a four-bedroom.
And that's what it's set up for.
Yeah. So I just wanted to point that out as a, as an additional, I think, you know, safety measure in not having, you know, risking having a twenty-person party show up for a four-bedroom house in our town. And as the owner, you also have to, I mean, I do. I brought it, but my homeowner's insurance, which has been increased to cover, you know, to cover this type of thing, as well as the other part of it, is that the people coming in town and staying locally, it is going to bring some revenue, additional revenue to Centralia. And, you know, some people come in who may never have been here before and there may be others who come back and go, wow, the town is really starting to grow and it's becoming, you know, it's really up, it's starting to be an up-and-coming place to be and just to visit. And it truly is like a little Hallmark town, tractor parade with all the stuff that goes on through the. It is. It is. It's a great place to have a family and be. And honestly, we don't really have places for people to stay. So this is, in light of having a hotel, this is what we got. So it's my opinion. Anything else? All right. So I can open this to vote whether we're, all those in favor of the, sorry, what?
I'd like, I recommend that you have a little longer than just a yea or nay vote.
Okay.
Because this becomes the basis if anybody has a valid objection of the ordinance. So I move that the planning and zoning commission finds that the applicant has submitted a valid application and the staff has fulfilled all of the requirements for advertising and public notice based on testimony here. And that based on that plus the questions and answers of the night's public hearing, that the commission votes to approve a conditional use permit as a short-term rental for that property.
I needed the motion anyway, so I didn't have to rush that.
They can play it back. Are we going, we are recording.
Yeah. It's been a while. So do we have, so that's your motion?
That's my motion. I'll say.
Good luck with that, I didn't write it all down.
Do you want to repeat?
I bet on tape.
Can you repeat that?
So all those in favor of the motion, as it was stated by law? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed to the motion?
I'll vote in favor of it. I still have some concerns. I do think it's something that we'll need to keep an eye on, but I'll vote in favor.
Okay. So at this point in time, the motion passes?
Motion passes. Now, before midnight or whenever, if anybody present still objects to the granting of this conditional use permit, there's a very brief petition that can be signed as a formal written objection. And in that case, our motion is null and void. And if the owner wants to pursue the matter, needs to go to a court of adjustment, which is a similar but more complicated and detailed process. It's never happened, but.
I was gonna say. I've been doing this a while.
Not just for this kind of, for any condition.
I know, that's what I'm saying. Like I've been doing this a while, I remember it happening, so.
I think there was one, where somebody objected and they went and they, the person objecting went and basically did an agreement on principles and was willing to withdraw their objection so that the motion would stand. That's what happens in small towns.
So, so we have a passed motion. So this concludes the public hearing and the item five on the agenda for the VRVO property at two twenty-two. And how do we want to handle, like, so we have as may arise kind of, allow, like allow that during that. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is as may arise. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is ASME or ISE, so you can bring forward your, your item.
Lyndon Borman, 800 days in court.
Yes.
I would like to see this board do an ordinance or regulation, I don't know what it would need, for when somebody builds a new house in any part of town that they put a sidewalk in. There's a whole section in the northwest part of this town, north of the railroad tracks, there's been, I counted them up today, five new either duplexes or houses built, and not a single sidewalk is on any of it. And about four of them were all built at the same time and should have had sidewalks built. So I would like it to make some sort of a rule, whatever it needs to be, that anytime a house is built, sidewalks have to be built.
If it's in an area that we've never had sidewalks?
Right across the street from her, there's a sidewalk, but in her whole side there, north of the electric building, there is not a single sidewalk.
With older dwellings there also, though.
No, there's no, well, Doug Brown owns two of them, but then Darren bought a bunch of property, or somebody did, and built four houses, and then there's the two duplexes, and then the two little houses that Crocker's built, sorry, I'm naming names, and then somebody else owns a duplex to the south of her, and those have all been built probably in five, six years, maybe 10 on a couple of them at the most, but not a single sidewalk was put in.
On?
On North Columbia and Fulham Wilder.
They weren't there.
Okay.
They weren't there, somebody didn't put it in.
There may not have been, but there should be.
There is an adopted city policy by resolution covering sidewalks. For new subdivisions, your concern is addressed, because they have to.
They have to in those, yes.
And they need to have them in place.
By a certain time.
By the time they get their certificate of occupancy.
Right. But, I mean, I'm just talking, you know, we've got houses popping up all over town where people, I mean, I don't know if the one across from you is, and if they.
They put any sidewalks.
Did they?
Yeah.
But there are others that have not.
And when we did ours, I think we just left out, the sidewalk was getting replaced at the same time.
Well, you have existing sidewalks, so, yeah.
I think that's the issue, is that some of the newer homes are butted up to older homes who didn't have those same type of regulations, so you can make somebody put in a sidewalk at new construction, and then they're going to stop and walk across the grass where the older home is. I think that's part of the issue.
That may well be, but at some time, hopefully, those houses, and I know, I'm talking 20, 30 years down the road, you know, that houses, those older houses will be replaced, but those five, four that they put on Fulham Wilder and on north of that, those were all put in at the same time, and there's no reason why they weren't sidelined.
Right.
But that's beside the point. Price is included in all the other subdivisions when it comes to sidewalks, and another one is the houses over here on Burton. They built two brand-new houses, the one, there was an old sidewalk there, and one was not put back in, the other, they put a sidewalk on the one side, but not on the other. And in the subdivision, you put in both sidewalks if you're on a corner, irregardless.
That's something I recommend.
Yeah, we take it together.
I mean, it's just something I want you to look at, I mean, there's never going to be sidewalks put in over there.
Yeah, see, if I have to walk door to door, knock on somebody's door and say, hey, you have to put a sidewalk in, I want you to stand next to me, so that way.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying in the future, Matt, I'm talking about in the future.
With all these older properties being taken out, we need to have something in place, and when you're building the house, you're going to put a sidewalk or two on here.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's all I'm asking, because our daughter lives over there, and she better have a sidewalk.
It is our sidewalks in general.
Right.
Because the whole town is crap, I mean, it's just one of the issues.
If there's no sidewalk on that entire street, there's no reason to put it on one house, because it will inevitably go in. There's actually no reason to put a house with a sidewalk on that, one house, there's none.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
I mean, it's just something to look at.
Yep. All right, so we'll take that up with council, you guys?
Reminder, my guess, there's several documents that say it's the aspiration of the city to get all sidewalks replaced. We have an ADA plan, I don't know where it's at, that says we have that as a goal. It was included basically in the resolutions declaring the major streets that we were going to start building, that curb and gutter and sidewalk. I don't think we got very far down that list before we ran into schools and a couple other things that need the sidewalks more.
I mean, if you don't start somewhere, you know, it won't happen.
Right.
I have a question. Who pays for that? Does the homeowner, or the city?
Right, right now, the homeowner has to, to stay standards, even if it crosses driveway then it's going to be even thicker. For the developer in a new subdivision, which then still is the property owner when they buy the house, it's in the price, you know, so ultimately, if you close a house, you're going to pay for it.
I mean, like over there where you guys live, it's never going to get curbed and gutted for, till we're all long gone.
It's soon.
And it might not be, yes. And she does, I checked, there's four parking places there, so even if she has eight people there, and however many cars, so she's, I checked that today.
All right, then, so your, your issue has been noted, and I'm sure that they will follow up on it, so is there anything else for the ASME or ISE section of this? Anybody else have anything they'd like to bring up?
Bring something up.
Is that?
We discussed several things with the subdivision regulations, the last, that were in our amendments from last time. Where are we with those?
We're in discussions with one of our on-call engineers, and they're assisting us with it, and they're bringing it back to the planning and zoning commission to look at when I get carried from them. Is that it? Does anybody have anything else? This brings us to item seven, which is the adjournment of this meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I think we motion we adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourned? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Anybody not in favor of adjourned? All right, thank you all.